Regular meeting of the City of Elgin, Texas, City Council to order on August eighteenth, Tuesday, August eighteenth, two thousand twenty at six oh three P M. And we'll start with roll call. Uh, word, starting with word one.
Begging here.
Pinson here.
I was muted.
Ariaga here.
Jones here.
Fraser here.
Dennis here.
All right, Madam Secretary, I certify that we have a quorum. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Gonzalez Lopez. And. I'm missing it, is that it? Uh, they're not here. Uh, uh, Councilmember Lopez informed me that he would be at a fire meeting tonight. And Councilmember Gonzalez informed us he would not be here too, correct?
Correct.
All right, uh, do I hear a motion to, uh, excuse Councilmembers Gonzalez and Lopez?
So move, Pinson.
Second.
Motion by Pinson and a second by Ariaga. Call for a vote.
Pinson, yes.
Thank you, yes.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
And Cannon, yes. That passes unanimously. Please let the reflect, the record reflect, both members are excused. And then we'll move into the invocation. Mayor, would you like to lead us?
All righty, let's pray. Our Father who art in heaven, Lord, we come to you with bowed heads and humble hearts. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Thank you, Lord, for blessing us to see another day. Pray your blessings upon this meeting, blessed to be what you'd have it to be. Bless us to conduct ourselves decently in order. Pray your blessings upon this meeting to be, um, utilized for the betterment of our city and its citizens. Bless each one, each family that's represented here, that's listening in or what have you. These are the blessings we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, thank you. Has anybody signed up for a public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, then that'll move us on to, uh, present, presentations, Ms. Freda Pierce.
Uh, Amy, are you on here, you're gonna help, kinda guide us through this? You want the mayor to read the proclamation, I know she's got free to listen in.
Yes, hello, good evening, y'all. We do have Freda with us, um, from the library. She and Heather Fowler have tuned in. And if our mayor Cannon, if you could read the proclamation, that'd be great. We, um, recognizing Freda for decades of wonderful service to the city of Elgin.
Is Heather gonna get her on the screen?
Yeah, that'd be easier, I didn't get a copy.
Heather gonna get, I got it on the screen, Mayor. Amy, is Heather gonna get Freda on the screen, are they on?
I believe so. I think. Yeah.
Yeah. Turn her camera on so we can see him if she's on.
Well, we could read it, but since everybody else can read it, I'd like to just spend talking, time talking about Freda.
Okay.
As soon as she can hear us. So, uh, uh, twenty-five years of service, um, and I think she's been one that she's done everything besides arrest anybody. Or, uh, uh, she's done just about everything, right? She was, uh, utility billing forever and, uh, back whenever that wasn't easy job. There she is.
There she is.
Freda, you got anything to say? It's your last chance, you hadn't said much all these years.
Yes, thank you for the, the honor and to all the nice people I've come in contact and worked with. And thank you for recognizing me and my time with the city.
Well, thank you very much for those times, I know there wasn't always easy years there, it's a lot of. Hopefully the work got easier here at the end than it was at the beginning, but, uh, uh, we sure appreciate you, it ain't gonna be the same without you.
I appreciate that.
Council, do y'all have anything? All right, well, yeah.
Jump in, just say that we, you know, President, unfortunately, all those years of service, uh, she certainly deserves a little more recognition than what we're doing here. But unfortunately, COVID's really compromised. Uh, I know the council would, would rather this be in person and something a little more personal, but, uh, but, uh, we're glad we can do this much. And, and we're having a little presentation this week, right, Amy?
Yes, so on Friday, we're going to have a small, uh, uh, party of sorts for Freda in the community room. And so the mayor and Tom have made plans to officially present this recognition. Um, and then Pam, our wonderful H R person, has done a nice special recognition for her too. We'll have two little treats and, um, wear our face coverings and keep our distance and still recognize our fabulous coworker.
Absolutely, maybe if we ever come back to a regular world like we used to have, uh, um, there'll be a time where we can recognize Freda and a couple of other people that, uh, that unfortunately we didn't have been able to recognize like, like we would have had we not been faced with COVID. Uh, uh, we've got some, uh, had some really important people here in the last, uh, few months, uh, leave, leave the city. And, 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 uh, they, people that have served us just like Freda has, and I'm not sure we've given her all the recognition I wish we could. So, so we'll, hopefully this, this will suffice for her to know, uh, how important she's been to the city. And, uh, and maybe we can do something a little bigger someday.
Well, she was hired with the city exactly one year before I was born. I could tell that.
Oh, my goodness.
You say more than I have. So, uh, well, that's cool. Freda, you know, we've had this conversation before, but, uh, we, you have been a special face, uh, for the city for many years. And I will personally see you Friday, but, uh, I, I thank you for being here and we sure would have liked to have done it in person.
Well, I understand, but that's the times.
That's right, well, thank you so much and you, you will be missed and I look forward to seeing you Friday.
All right, thank you.
That's okay, I was just gonna thank her for her service. I'm glad you were there, we needed you there to pay the water bills and be a little bit mean when we needed to be mean. You went to the, to the, to the library, thank you for all you did.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on to City Manager's Report, uh, number one, update on the City of Elgin coronavirus pandemic. And, uh, uh, and that usual. Thanks, any changes, Tom?
Not, not really, Mayor, I didn't, I don't think. You and I have stayed in general contact, uh, we, the conversation, we don't see anything changing operationally for the city. Our, our next kind of review deadline or date we set for ourselves, self-imposed, was, was this Friday. But, um, uh, we're not really optimistic, we're gonna, uh, do many changes from, from the current situation until we see, uh, um, a little stronger change in some of the metrics. Uh, we continue to do, uh, do business though, and, and, uh, that's a big part of, uh, of, uh, where we stand on this issue right now is that, uh, we seem to be, uh, responsive to all citizen requests. Uh, I've shared some, some numbers with you that, that clearly our, our business is continuing, construction business, uh, utility business. And we don't seem to be running into any real problems providing the services folks need. So, uh, we'll sure be, uh, for it'll, we'll be glad to get to a point where we can open up the buildings again. But, but it's working out all right so far. Uh, as far as the regional group goes, I don't, I don't know if Chris has any, uh, particularly inside, don't have a whole lot of news. Obviously, I, I think for the last month or so, our policy group, uh, on, on both sides, and Travis and Bashrop have been a lot more focused on, uh, school issues and getting schools open and, uh, or, or not opening and figuring that situation out. So, so we continue to get statistical information, but, but don't have really a whole lot of, uh, new, uh, information to share with the council as it relates to city operations.
Countywide, it seems to be experiencing a argumentative downtick, I would think. Uh, they're still not ready to call it a downturn, and I don't know if they will for a while. But, um, most of it is just how the numbers come in, but it does look like it's not getting worse. If, sure, the right medical personnel could argue with me, but, um, I, I guess, Tom, did you have, I had, kinda wanted to switch gears on the COVID thing as far as our meetings go, did you have anything else to add?
Uh, not, not relative to COVID, unless anybody had any questions. Where, I, I guess the main point for council is, uh, um, uh, we'll probably be continuing to extend this, this threat level for, uh, modified plan we've been in now for about a month, uh, for another two weeks at least, or maybe three weeks, uh, coming up this Friday.
Yeah, uh, I wanted to kinda start a dialogue with the council tonight regarding this. Uh, we have our, mostly have our new, uh, uh, council quarters, council chambers, um, ready to go, sounds like. And, uh, we have the ability to, and I think that, uh, uh, we are gonna keep the, uh, however things go forevermore, the opportunity for people to, uh, to deliver public comment virtually or, uh, uh, paper electronically or whatever. Um, and I think that's just one more service that we're, uh, offering to the, uh, or one more step we're giving to the, uh, the public for being able to do, you know, get their word out, given another opportunity to, to hear, for us to hear their voice. We will have capabilities, uh, if, God forbid, this situation happens again, uh, we'll be able to, uh, have, you know, in-person and virtual, uh, capabilities at the same time there with, uh, with all the technology. And I think that we'll be, by, by September, I'm thinking we would be able to do that. So I wanted to see with the, if you still had the option to, if you weren't personally, um, ready to, to be in, in an in-person meeting, would, uh, um, knowing that you could stay home if you didn't wanna come yourself, would, would anybody, would everybody be comfortable or uncomfortable with, uh, starting meetings in person, uh, come September as we start to do the budget and, and all that stuff? Knowing that we can kinda do a hybrid model?
Can we have it to where it's, uh, um, it may be in person and then still have an option of in-person?
Correct.
If, if, cause I am actually traveling, uh, I'm weak. And I'll be out of town for a couple of weeks, so I don't wanna come in right away. But I do think that we can manage to where it could be, you know, a partially.
Feedback there, Suzie, one second. All right, sorry about that. Uh, yeah, Suzie, I agree with everything you said, and I think the answer to that would be, uh, um, yes, we could make that happen, and that would be the responsible way to, to do that, um, as far as your, your situation. So I guess that's my question, do the councils, anybody have a problem with it being a, a personal, non-mandatory personal meeting? Meaning that you can still, uh, uh, we can still, you can still come in virtually? And we'll still be social, maintaining social distancing in, during that meeting? And, and I believe, uh, we can have this discussion too, but we could have the meeting and still make it virtual, still be virtual to everybody. Probably no matter what, from now on, that, that, that'll be the way it happens. But I don't believe we would be introducing citizens in to the meeting, just, uh, necessary staff and council members. Um, but it would still be virtual to our constituents.
Right, more of an option.
An option for council members, but still not open to the public yet.
Mayor, I have a quick question. Um, I'm just wondering if it's a hybrid model, does that complicate logistics and presentation for staff? I mean, in other words, if the majority remains virtual, you have two people show up in person, does that complicate?
I'll let, I'll let Tom answer that.
Yeah, I, I would think, um, you know, that, part of that, this scenario you just said, I would hope, I guess, I would hope we'd have the half or majority that wanted to do in person, uh, you know, if it's, it's gonna be five to two or, 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 I mean, seven to two or eight to one that wanna do it virtual, we should probably say that. But, uh, as the mayor knows, we're, we're, we're increasing this change, will increase our capabilities just across the board and all the things we're talking about. Well, we'll, we'll have a, a bigger dais where there'll be more room for council. We have, uh, we'll have it now, we'll have a, uh, um, a P A system, uh, every council member will have a microphone. So we've increased our, uh, our A V capabilities that way. We have a much better, uh, A V system, the, the audio visuals, and that'll tie into a master system. So, uh, Michael's, Gonzalez has led this effort and, and our capabilities across the board will be bigger. Obviously, in that room, we would have the ability to, um, to, to open it to the public to a certain degree and still achieve social distancing, we've kinda already measured out how many chairs we could have in. But, but the hybrid part of it is right to, Jessica, you're, you know, we've heard of other cities, uh, you know, they do this where some are, are, uh, are virtual, but they're shown on the screen along with their presentations. So we think we can manage that. I, I've heard of, uh, cities are sometimes, uh, if people want to come or have a presentation, they basically wait in the parking lot till their item comes up, and then they're allowed to come in, and then they can address the council in person that way. So, so I think there's, there's certainly variations of, of this that, that we can make work. And, and, uh, the timing of having moved over here to the community center is, is crucial. This all, we couldn't even really consider it, I don't think, if we were still in the smaller chamber. But, uh, but there's ways to do it, and I think, as the mayor said, it kinda starts with, uh, with the council's preferences. And, and, uh, I, I think we can make it work.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
Chris, like my comment, I just was wondering if we do that where, where, you know, some people like zoom in or whatever it is, um, are we going to have cameras on each of the council people? So that they can see us as well as we can see them? Or, um, you know, I mean, I've been in conference calls where for years that, you know, Austin, an office, uh, in Austin, an office and in Atlanta, they all meet in the room and nobody sees anything that's going on. But we, you know, are this kind of extended part of the meeting that doesn't get included very much. So we wanna be sure that maybe there's that video aspect that whoever dials in is able to see us as well.
I would say that part of this, uh, um, you hit on the one part of the, the project we, we haven't quite finalized is that, that the goal is to eventually, we, we think this facility now will be able to enable us to, uh, to, uh, put all our meetings out on Facebook or social media so that, uh, uh, we can basically televise the meetings to the public. That, that, that's the last part we, we don't have quite figured out. But what I would say more to your question for us, even when we do that, we're talking about, uh, uh, a wide screenshot of the whole, a permanent camera, fixed camera with kind of a wide screenshot that would show all the council at once. So you're not gonna get this individual headshot look that you get through this system if that, if that's what you're asking.
Maybe a, a, a single zoom or a, by, you know, a, an option to where somebody's speaking at the back dais, you know, it can be seen, but yeah.
The way I've done it before is just, and mainly this, like anything, it's, it's money. It's, if we had the money to hire a whole crew in there, we could take individual shots of everybody in cameras. But usually it's kinda have two fixed cameras, one of the whole dais and one of the, one of the public, the speaker, whoever's speaking or presenting. So, so it's certainly a, a big uptick from where we are now. But, uh, but, uh, if that was your question, you won't really be able to see, we're not thinking of a system where you'd be able to see individual, there'd be a headshot of an individual council member when they're speaking.
I think what you were wanting to know is the people that weren't in the meeting, would they have the same, would they have the same cooperation? I think what you were wanting to know is the people that weren't in the meeting, would they have the same, would they have the same cooperation? And my understanding is is the people that were in the meeting would be at the dais. So you would probably get, you wouldn't get the one-on-one shot of the people that were in person. You get that that wide zoom, I'm using my hands here, we all just can't see it. Uh, you get that wide zoom of the whole um council, but the but the individuals coming in from home. We were to see you like we see you now on a screen, right?
I think so, I think that's right.
Seems doable anyway, but I guess what I would say is for the sake of of that, if we could dial, have the dialogue tonight. And 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 maybe based on if we could achieve all those capabilities by the next meeting. Um, would would y'all be willing to do that? Whereas if we couldn't, we just would come back to another. Another of all virtual meeting. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's good.
Anybody have a problem with that, Brad's? I don't know if that's.
No, I'm I'm just like, yeah, that I'm cool with going to in-person meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so so safe to move along?
As long as we're careful and we're op- open and communicate about everything, I mean, you know. Like I said, I I said, as long as we we communicate and we're careful, I think it's fine. Like I know I wouldn't go in within the next couple of weeks after that, yes, I think it's.
Right. What is the the first Tuesday of the month? Is it September first?
First.
First?
Two weeks from today, two weeks from today.
So if we can't make it safe and if we can't make it all, you know, virtual capable, we 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 won't do it. But assume we can do all that, y'all are okay with with doing that, and then whoever's not individually comfortable with going in can still stay at home. Y'all okay with that? All right, so Tom, I guess just let us know the capabilities in the meantime and.
Yeah, we'll start working that way.
Cool. Alrighty, anything else regarding COVID question? All right, then moving on to item number two, review and discussion of schedule for adoption of the twenty 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 twenty-one annual budget and property tax rate.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a little bit connected to what we were just talking about and and the adoption of the uh tax rate. Uh, or the public hearing on the tax rate we're having soon. So we uh just wanted to uh uh. Discuss this with council, see any particular input. When we put the budget adoption calendar together, we we had um. Had actually uh scheduled the first work session for last week. And as you know, we kind of swapped that out with these budget briefings that we did with council members. We still got uh, we still have at least one more of those we need to do uh to catch uh everybody up. But but we had two really good sessions last week, I think, and uh it got uh. Were able to share some information, got a lot of uh good feedback from the council members. We have uh again, as part of the tentative schedule, the original calendar, though, our first full work session was. Was plugged into next Tu- next Tuesday night on the twenty-fifth. And then uh, we also have one scheduled for September eighth, which would basically is set up that way. To um have uh after the 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 public hearing, just to see uh. So council can be positioned to respond to uh budget issues if they want. However, we usually are when we reach this point in in the budget development process, frankly, after we've done these briefings. I think the council's pretty, or I mean, the staff's pretty much shared all the information they have with the council. So these last two work sessions, uh should we have them, when we have them, what we're going to talk about. Are are kind of where we need some guidance from the council on how to proceed. Now, um, of course, uh, complicate these managers a little bit. We're going to talk about the tax rate, the details of the tax rate a little bit. But but we're voting tonight to set the uh public hearing on uh the tax rate for September first. Uh, last year and in preceding years, due to the way the tax rate worked out, we uh um. Yeah, we were required to have two separate hearings on the tax rate. Uh, what's again, these dates that that you're seeing before you is what's on the budget adoption calendar, and we anticipated that happening this year. But as it turns out, because we're we're recommending the lower tax rate, we really only are required to have the one public hearing. And by uh uh local government code or or city charter, we have to have a hearing on on the budget. So this schedule contemplated the two hearings on the tax rate. And and because at the last few years, because we've had to have two hearings on the tax rate, we just had a second hearing on the budget as well to taking comments. So the the situation we're in now is that we don't really have to have two hearings. Of course, the council can have all the hearings at once on, and and it never hurts to be able to say you had more than one on the budget uh or the tax rate. But um, uh, you know, we're obviously, at least staff-wise, we're not seeing any kind of interest from the public in these things. So so it kind of scrambles up this schedule, I guess, is what I'm getting at. So we need to, I I wanted to talk a little bit about whether we need to have the work session next week. Uh, you want to wait until after, we have to have the hearing on the first, assuming the council votes to do that here under new business. You want to wait till after we have that hearing and then possibly have a work session on September eighth? And then it also doesn't look, it looks like we can uh take care of all the business we need to then, possibly on September fifteenth. Um, and not have to have the called meeting on September twenty-second, because we don't necessarily need a second reading. Or a second hearing on the on the tax rate or or the final adoption of the budget. Now, one side, almost side item complicating that even further is this conversation you may have heard of. Is that in spite of the situation we're in, the pandemic? Uh, and in spite of the fact that the governor has has suspended many aspects to do with the Meetings Act and public hearings. For some reason that I'm confused about is he he and the attorney general have specifically said. That they're not suspending the rules for a public in-person public hearing on the tax rate. Basically, they've taken the position that it's okay for us to do everything else virtually except for the tax rate. I can only assume that they made such a political, big political deal about it a year ago. I think they expect hordes of people to come forward objecting uh to the tax rate, and they don't want to deprive them of that opportunity. So um certainly don't anticipate that here in Elgin. Uh, and and as many that our council members recalled in our sessions last week. They were trying to guess the last time uh some of our longtime members had ever had a single citizen come to the hearing to complain about the tax rate. But so in this mix of in-person or virtual, the September first meeting, even if even if. We ultimately decide to do it virtual, apparently, we're going to have to set up something so we can do it in person. What I'm not clear about is that, you know, we can, cities have public hearings all the time that that are literally just that. Public hearings, council members aren't compelled to be there. Uh, you just have to have the hearing, let people come and say what they want to say. So I'm not even clear if if we have to have the in-person hearing, does the council have to be there? But.
There's something that's.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I. We just talked about with the meeting, though, we'll have the in-person meeting, we'll have the hearing on the first. Should be okay, but but uh, but really, for this item, I just, I need to gauge what what uh. And of course, we can have more than two budget work sessions. And like I said, this is from this point forward with the budget. Uh, aside from the the statutory requirements, we'll do and then, you know, how many work sessions or reviews we have. Uh, we kind of let the council take the lead on that and decide when and where they want to do those, so.
Yeah, and I was going to say, if we made in person, and I was remembering why I was prompting to have that meeting, and this was why. Uh, to be in person, um, even if if nobody else went, like seriously, if we if we didn't have COVID or none of that. We've done this with uh EDC several times over the years, just when I think there has to be a public hearing. When you sell or buy land or something like that, you have to offer a public hearing. And typically, what we've done is we've had an officer of the of the board, usually the city secretary or or the um EDC director, whoever. Sit there, have the tape open, open the hearing, if somebody wants to talk, they can talk and and be recorded. And typically, you know, it doesn't feel good uh for by the council, they all want to be there and say, hey, we all, we owe that citizen to listen to them. But we've had one or two different council members or EDC members show up for those. That can be as minimal as, you know, me, and I'm willing to be there, hear hear what they have to say, have it on record, and then make that. Make that available to all of you, if worst case scenario. But if we if we meet in in uh public, it's not going to matter by then anyway, so.
That's right, it it could all line up as this, we are ready to come back on the first and we'll be fine. I just, I guess it's more than an interesting sidebar to the whole conversation. I don't know why we have to have this one hearing now in person, but that's the way it is. So I really need, Mayor, if uh I don't know if we want to do it tonight or want to do it later, but we're. I I don't know if we we used these briefings last week, I think, to answer a few questions council members had. We we hit on the main issues of the budget. We're glad to meet as many times as you want and go over it at the same time. Um, uh, we don't want to have meetings just to have meetings either, so I I really just trying to gauge everybody's opinion about that.
How does the council feel about the budget work sessions? I guess it's what you're wanting to know about, Tom. The uh, I assume y'all have all got, y'all all have had, got a copy. I assume that if if you have questions, you know, you know where you can ask those. But how do y'all feel about trying to get together for one or two or nine uh of culmination meetings? We've done that in the past with with big changes. I think we've addressed most of those this year as far as substantial, you know, overhauls, if you will, or or updates of this, that, or the other. Kind of addressed anything that that would qualify under that um thus far. Do does anybody have a preference on? Who thinks we should have to meet?
Seems like we would want to meet at least once. I mean, we have two options. Tentatives, it's interesting to think about meeting after the first public hearing in the event there are comments that come our way for consideration.
That's what I was going to say is that September eighth review meeting seems to fit better than obviously next week. Have one go around a public hearing, tax rate, all that, and then and then come back a week later. Um, however, we need to 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 just have another roundtable discussion. Does that sound good? So cancel the twenty-fifth and keep the twenty-eighth, I mean, keep the September eighth, is that all good? Three.
Yes.
Okay, we'll plan on that then. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Still your item, if you've got anything else on it, you good?
I don't, and I don't have anything else in particular report unless uh anybody has any questions for me about anything else.
That general activity as well?
Right.
Okay, questions, counsel? All right. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Um, only one item again on the consent agenda is the approving the virtual uh regular. Virtual regular meeting minutes of July twenty-first and August fourth. Does anybody uh, Sue, did you see anything that you wanted to change on those?
Few minor things and I'm good.
Okay.
We're good.
Fair enough. Uh, then I'll entertain a motion to uh approve item number one of the consent agenda.
Still moved, Brazier.
Second, Jones.
Okay, got a motion by Brazier and a second by Jones. Any other questions? Call for vote, Sue.
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Cannon, yes.
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
All right, that passes in our space, thank you, counsel. On on the new business, uh, item number one, consider uh consider setting a date of September first, two thousand twenty for a public hearing. On a tax rate and vote on a proposed tax rate of point six-three-five-six-six-three per one hundred dollar valuation. In case you're counting, that is a decrease in the rate. Just in case you didn't catch that.
Yeah, all right. Uh, thanks, Mayor. I, we unfortunately uh uh. Charles got a little sick today and uh I had to send him home, and I told him I thought we'd figure this all out. These days you can't take anything for granted that way. And particularly since he's so much older than me, I wanted to make sure he um and got better. I I hope he's listening, uh, got better. But so anyway, uh, don't hold me, he did all the calculations. So as you know, we discussed this in our briefings last week, but I think I can handle enough to set the public hearing. And it, we just wanted to run through quickly. It's just a never-ending confusing thing that we've, those who've been on council for a while, for example, just as simple as. The effective tax rate, the rollback tax rate, we use those for so many years that I think people. Most people could if they paid attention, kind of figured out what those numbers meant. Well, now, of course, they're all labeled new things, the no new revenue tax rate, voter approval tax rate. I it's what you we used to call the rollback rate, no new revenues, what the effective rate used to be. But anyway, uh, uh, basically, uh, you've got the notice in your packet. This action tonight is to uh simply to vote, to set the public hearing. I I don't think there's any big, sense any big disagreement amongst the council about the budget we put together and how we've done it. But all of this language that I'm showing on the screen is is kind of a breakdown of what's in the notice, what will be in the paper. Uh, and it's uh, it it's kind of confusing, but it uh it's certainly confusing to the layperson, I think. But uh, what the the action is, and even though the action will say this, that. Uh, the members of the governing body voted on the proposed tax increase, uh, and it'll have your names listed here. It it, all you're voting on tonight is technically is to have the public hearing on the proposed tax rate increase. And with it'll be a separate vote where you'll vote on the tax rate. So it, but this this man, this notice, exactly how it is worded, is mandated by the new law, Senate Bill Two last year. So so they even acknowledge they're using the same language that 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 you'd use when you vote for the tax rate. But this is what it's going to say. Uh, the short answer for us is this, this information is required is I got to admit, this is probably a little more helpful, I think. That'll be in the notice, starting to put it into words where people understand. But still, in the end of the day, we're going to have this public hearing. It's going to say at the top, just what it says here, notice of public hearing on a tax increase, yet we're dropping the tax rate by two cents. As count as Charles had uh briefed the council, we talked about in our briefings last week. Uh, essentially, under this new law, if we adopted the same tax rate this year, we would be compelled to have a a rollback election. It wouldn't be any choice, we wouldn't have, uh, could require petition, we'd simply be compelled to do that. So once we got the final numbers together, we did the calculations and determined that the uh. Six-three-five-six-six-three is the highest rate we can go without triggering that rollback election. So so that law is forcing us to uh cut it back by about two cents. Um, what that means is the budget as presented uh was predicated on the higher rate. So it's it's created about an eighty thousand dollar hole in our overall budget. That in our general fund that we'll have to address, but but we've talked about, we think we've got, we had built up some surplus in this. Or um, the set aside that in the salary adjustment fund that we think we can tap into to help us balance that budget. Uh, the second line here on on shows the numbers, I think, is 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 what's pertinent often to folks. Is that the the average homestead taxable value has gone up uh since last year in in Elgin. But as you know, that's something the city council has no control over, so that's where this. I think all of us that have ever tried to get in a debate with citizens, many struggle to understand that part, that you set the rate, but we don't set the value. So so what this action would mean is with this rate, if your valuation didn't go up this year, then you're actually, your city taxes will go down. Uh, but typically, uh, we live in the part of the country where we're probably going to see values go up just about every year. So so you see the other pertinent issue here, uh, numbers, uh, I think maybe these numbers. being in the notice might have some meaning, more meaning than, than our previous notice, but we'll see. But anyway, so that's basically it. The action tonight, as I said, is, is simply, but it's required. The city council asked to specifically set the public hearing, but, but it doesn't mean you're necessarily committing to that public, to that tax rate. That vote will come after the September 1st public hearing. So I'd be glad to try to answer any questions, except for the math of how we came up with these numbers. I'd have to get back to you about that if you have any of those.
Council, you all have any questions? You understand this model? The reason for doing this? Okay, if I was hearing nothing, I will vote to set the September 1st, 2020 for a public hearing on the tax increase and vote on a proposed tax rate of 0.635663 for $100 valuation.
So moved.
Benson.
Second, Vega.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Benson and a second by Councilmember Vega. If there's any other questions? All right, call for a vote, Mayor.
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Cannon, yes. Thank you very much, Council. Onto item number two, resolution of the City of Elgin, Texas, establishing a social media commenting policy for all city platforms, including Facebook and Twitter, and providing for related matters. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item, I guess the heading is pretty self-explanatory. We've actually, I was thinking today that this having a social media policy for a municipality or local government to have that's very typical and standard. And the truth is, it's probably a good sign that Elgin's gone this long without having to create a policy for this, this for social media entries. But, but we've reached that point where we think it's appropriate. We, frankly, we've had a couple of issues lately, COVID, of course, being a big one. The highway marker situation that generated a lot of traffic on our, on our, our different platforms, a lot of feedback. But ironically, the, most of the comments that we received, I mean, in both cases, were not critical of the city so much as individuals would get into it with each other on, somebody'd comment on our page and then somebody'd attack them. And and when I reviewed those, we saw some people using some, you know, not a lot, but enough to warrant this really foul language and, and, and personal attacks. So what's really important for people to understand that this, our, it's not a social media policy that has anything to do with editing. People are free to, to express their views and comment, and we need that kind of feedback from residents. So it doesn't have anything to do with whether the comment is negative or critical of the city. But using profanity, personal attacks, political endorsements, these are the kind of things, obviously, that, that we shouldn't allow on either Facebook or Twitter. So we're going to be very careful and be very disciplined and certainly certainly not going to restrict folks' right to share with us their views. But but, but obviously, I think anybody, anybody that, that only very slightly use social media knows there, there's cases where people can, can cross the line and, and and the city simply needs to, to have, to be able to have some control over that. And then also in our policy, we thought it's, it's important to continue. You know, we can't ever get in a situation where people think that commenting on Facebook is the same thing as offering on-the-record testimony to the council in a public hearing, or that, that, that we can respect or consider those comments like we do when people take the time to come and, and reach out to us, to put something in writing, to, to express themselves in a, a simple way. But I, I do think it's probably worth stating this in the policy so people understand that, that those are, those are two different things. So and then, of course, with that, as usual, as you can imagine, it's not like we made this policy up. This, this, most of this language is standard, what we've seen in other communities. And have had the city attorney look at it and it's appropriate. But because it's the city staff that will actually be doing the managing of the site, it's, it's appropriate that the city council establishes this policy. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, Council? This is a long, long way to go. I'm glad we have this now for me. Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution as presented.
So moved, Dennis.
Jones, second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Dennis and a second by Councilmember Jones. There's no other comments? I'll call for a vote.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Cannon, yes.
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Jones, yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. On to item number three. Resolution, the City Council of the City of Elgin, Texas, awarding a bid for the FM 1704 wastewater wastewater extension project to M and C Fonseca Construction Company and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for for sale in an amount not to exceed $1,976,345 for construction of a wastewater facility, wastewater facility stipulated in the bid and making certain findings related there, too. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is one that, excuse me. Is the, the moving forward with the actual construction project relative to what became the annexed area, we called that, we've been working on for a number of years. The engineering has been completed and we've now bid the project. Council's enbriefted on this in the past. It basically is an extension of the sewer main to sewer services to the properties that the city annexed in in, what would that be, 2015? And this concludes the installation of a list station and, and the line. Beau, are you on? I can't see if you're, I thought he was going to try to be on. But this is a, a project's been bid, recommended for approval. It, it actually hits the cost estimate, I think TRC gave us some time ago. No real surprises with the project, but but I wouldn't, I guess Beau's not on there. I thought he was going to be on. But be glad to try to answer any questions. It's a expense that will come out.
Yeah, I muted you earlier, not knowing who it was.
You've got anything in particular to add, Beau?
No, the reason for M.C. Fonseca going with them is they showed the better experience, the low bid. If you look at the bid tab, they did not have any specific company experience with list station. And in being on the deadline that we're on and the type of oversight in that particular area, we wanted to make sure someone had experience in actually installing list stations. At this kind of length of line, M.C. Fonseca completed a very similar project for another client of ours, not too far in the past, within the last year. So we feel comfortable that they'll be able to do this. The project's already been approved by Tech dot. So it's just waiting award by council and then contracts signed to, to get them started.
As for the S1704 annex property, so we've beaten that horse enough. So we're finally getting those services out there. So this is just a resolution awarding the contract that we got to have. Does Council have any questions? Beau, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Do, do we have you on the hook for anything else?
I think the next item. I did want to make sure that the motion, Tom, if I heard it correctly, that it allows you up to the 25% or not.
It's not listed.
Because I heard it stated that it would be maxed out at the 1.9.
That's what, that's how it read.
The language, I'm sorry, Mayor. The language in the resolution, we, we, there's a clause in the resolution that says we have that 25% authority.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
So I'll cover that in the motion.
Well, we started putting that in the resolution, Mayor, on these, so you don't have to put it in the motion. But it doesn't hurt either. You can do that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I hate it. All right, thanks, Beau, for that clarification. Any questions, Council, before we take a vote? All right, I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution on the stated agenda item as presented in your packet.
So moved.
Second, Brazier.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Benson and a second by Councilmember Brazier. Any other questions? And I'll call for a vote, Mayor.
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. Yes.
No problem. Cannon, yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Beau. Thank you. And that'll move us on to number four, resolution of the City of Elgin, Texas, authorizing the award of an engineering service provider contract, contract for the Texas General Land Office, CDBG mitigation 2015 through 2016 Hurricane Harvey, Harvey competition grant. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a fairly standard, another application for grant funds. There's actually GLO money set aside for 2015, 2016 flood events, and then Hurricane Harvey as well. So there's actually kind of three different pools of money that we are going to try to access grant funds for. It's a little bit different than, than others, but it's the same basic concept in that there's no matching required portion. But from the city, if we qualify, yet at the same time, we have to have some engineering services to develop the plans to submit a qualifying application. If you remember, our other typical CDBG or other grant funds, there's a matching requirement, but we hire the engineer and then we get the grant, we're allowed to count what we've paid the engineer toward that. This won't be the case in this case, although once you're approved for the grant, it is possible to use some of those funds for for engineering or reimburse ourselves. So the point is, I can't, we, we, we need the engineering support to, to submit these applications. I can't tell you for sure, we could be out the money that, that we paid TRC in this, this event. But if we're successful, the, the benefit will in multiples outweigh whatever we, whatever cost of these engineering services are for. So so it's a little bit different way of going around about, but it's basically the same typical grant application process.
Yep. Questions, Council? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved, Benson.
Second, Brazier.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Benson and a second by Councilmember Brazier. Any other questions? All right, then I'll call for a vote, Mayor.
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brazier, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Cannon, yes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Council. So, yeah, thank you, Beau. And that will move us to announcements. Anybody got anything to announce? Couple of things going on this week.
Yeah, we're gonna be Circle Brew groundbreaking on, on Friday at five. We want to, unfortunately, that won't due to social distancing requirements, we won't be able to call that a public event. But but at the same time, all the council are invited and we've got a pretty good invitee list, so it should make a nice day for us. And, and obviously, we're confident that when the construction is done out there, we'll, we'll be out of the COVID world and then be able to have a big public event when, when the opening occurs. But we're, we're real excited about that project getting started. So that'll be this week. And I, I will tell you that we, we're also, we have a meeting this week with the Central Texas Regional Mobility Authority. Our mayor pro temp is actually helping us, a meeting with that group to discuss possibilities of extending the toll road out here to Elgin. They seem very interested in continuing that dialogue and staff already had one meeting with them. And, and so we're, obviously, that's a very long-term project. But the fact that they, they continue, CDRMA continues to to seek information from us, shows us, I think, that they're really serious about trying to get the toll road at least through Mainor and on its way to, to Elgin. I guess those are the two main things I had to share next.
Okay, anybody from the council have anything? All right, well, then I will adjourn us at 6:59. And seeing how we were three minutes late, that was a very quick meeting. Thank you very much, guys, and we will, we'll see you on the first.
Thanks, Matt.